And Scott, welcome. Before we start with public comments, does anybody on the board have a problem if we pull Mr. Harrington to the top so that you don't have to wait around for other items? I know you're here just for the Somerset situation. So that would be the, under new business, request for memorandum and understanding with the town of Somerset, and that would go right after public comments. Okay? I hate to have you hang around on this lovely night.
No objection.
You okay with that, Joe? Okay. Do I have any public comments tonight? Hearing none. Okay. So, we have a request. This is the new business that we're going to jump into, since Linda isn't here either. We'll jump into the Somerset request. Somerset, which is a non-operating town, has asked if they can, basically, vote at our polling stations and also use our dump and pay the normal fees of a Dover resident. Would you like to weigh in on more details on that?
Only I'm sorry I gave you so much paper. Again, I'm Ricky Harrington. I'm the supervisor for the town of Somerset and also for the town of Glossenberry. Somerset and Glossenberry are the only two unorganized towns in the state, and the reason why they're the only two is that there are other towns that have never been organized, but those two, at one time, had organizations, just like Dover and Shasbury and all the other towns, but they got a little out of control and the population died off and the state figured out that they were a charter. So, living in Glossenberry for the last 20 years, I had agreements with Shasbury, and the state asked that we take the time to actually put in agreement, a letter of memorandum of understanding. So it's in writing, review it every couple of years, and that way there's nobody who has any hard feelings, and nobody has anything to question about later. So, all of a sudden, I'm getting requests from new people who've lived in Somerset or moved into Somerset, Shelley Hollywood and Tom Williamson. They told me they'd come over here and they actually, I guess, disposed of some of their garbage and stuff, and I said, "Well, it'd be nice if we had that memorandum of understanding so there's no hard feelings," or so maybe somebody says, "Hey, you can't bring that over," and then they got to go back out. And that's the reason why I'm proposing the memorandum that I've given you tonight. It is based right on a similar one that's between Shasbury and Glossenberry that we've had, like I said, for the last several years. Differences in Glossenberry and Shasbury, we actually provide a plowing service for a small section of road that actually goes through Glossenberry, comes back into Shasbury to a couple of residents. So, in return, they give us fire, they give us EM, what is it, a rescue squad, they give us voting polls, and they give us the dumping. Thank you. And so there was no exchange, other than the fact that you do us a little favor, we'll do you a little favor. I don't have anything to offer you folks. We have no services, we have not, I mean, if I'm allowed to, like, that service is given to anybody, everybody who wants to come to Somerset residential. So I'm proposing that we sign an agreement every couple of years, and we offer you a $500 stipend. It's probably like your people's select board pays. It does pay for your time, but it is a token of appreciation from the townspeople.
Thank you. So, does anybody on the board have any questions? Sarah?
This question's for Andy. If someone from Somerset is voting here, does it create any additional work for you for the polling place?
There's very few voters in Somerset. A lot of them are currently on our voter rolls, and statute controls who can vote where as far as an unorganized town is concerned. Instead of people trying to look up that statute and figure out, "Hey, am I in the same representative district as this, or am I in the same county as that, or which towns can I possibly legally vote in?" This would set up people in Somerset who know, "Hey, we can vote Dover, Dover can handle it." I think we've got maybe, you know, five camps on our voter rolls right now, maybe four. And it's no problem for me whatsoever. While I'm at the floor, I'd just like to say, I think it's a great idea. A lot of our, you know, future plans as far as trails go, Somerset's right over the mountain from Mount Snow, the top of Mount Snow is in the town of Somerset, and, you know, the Velemon Trail and the Hut System and so forth will be coming through Somerset into Dover, and I think it's a good partnership. I don't think it would cost us much money, and I think it's good.
May I just add to that?
Yes.
In Shasbury, where I vote, the only issue becomes that when they're handing out the ballots, that those residents of Somerset cannot vote on any town discussions or...
Yeah. It's all for statewide or national elections.
Correct. And that's the only thing that has to be kept.
I think with that number, we can probably handle that. You think?
You'll have to think so.
Linda?
I was just going to also add that I was appointed by the governor as one of the assessors for Somerset, and it does not entail much work at all. So I just think, you know, as much as we can work together, I think it's just all for the greater good.
My only comment was that it would be easier probably for people to, I don't know where the people live in Somerset, but I know the main road in and out of Somerset, it goes through Wilmington, so I, we're more than happy to do it. I just want, I was curious why, and it sounds like we, some of those answers have been already talked about, they're already on our voter rolls, and probably our transfer station is fairly easy to access because it's open frequently off of Main Road. So that, I was just curious why it was Dover and versus some other town.
May I try to be as polite as I can about that? I would just say that Wilmington isn't being very neighborly.
Okay. We don't need to go anymore. So, this is an agreement that there's a bi-annual payment of $500 to the town of Dover.
And again, please, as I say, this is up for negotiation. If you people think that that's too much to give you, please say so. If you don't think it's enough, please say so. If there's things in that memorandum that you're not happy with, I'm more than happy to work with you folks. On the other hand, if you see problems, I don't know.
I'd like to ask our road commissioner, do you have any issues with the Somerset residents accessing the Dover transfer station? That'd be a no.
I think the $500 is, I don't think that should be higher or lower. It's very nice. We pay as we dump in, we pay as we go. It's nice that you're, we appreciate it, and we can go into the dump budget.
Right. I'm more than happy to work with you folks.
Andy, will that cover any costs you might have?
Yes, absolutely.
So would somebody, if there's no other discussion, if somebody like to make a motion that the chair sign this agreement with the unorganized town of Somerset to be the polling station and the public landfill for them, and also that we be paid $500 every two years?
I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding with Somerset, which covers and includes use of our transfer station and polling places at a fee of $500 every other year.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Would you please put it on your dance card to have a conversation, or at least give me the call every two years? I don't have to come over here, but I also would like to make sure you send me a bill, an invoice for the $500, so it always is paid.
All right.
The treasure is still behind you.
Yeah, no, actually, it probably, Jeanette will probably keep this as a, you know, every other year in the summertime. It looks like this usually, yeah.
Yeah, July, around 1st of July every two years.
The first of fiscal year.
Right. I just don't want to fall through the cracks because things like that do fall through the cracks.
Of course, every, and it's only every other year.
Right.
So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Unanimous.
You'll get a copy of this. I'm going to make sure, our, Jeanette, our administrative manager, is not here tonight, so I want to make sure she gets all the paperwork back and pushes everything around the right way.
The transbill that I gave you all, folks, sounds a little like, "What the heck, it's Harrington Steel, that's my company," but Hotmail, me, didn't, you know, we weren't being neighborly either, so I ended up having to go to Gmail for my latest email address, so the latest memorandum has all my contacts. I don't want to have you on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you for putting me in the line. I apologize to everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to jump back to the assessor. We have, under the assessors, is consider assistant to the assessor position. And did everybody get to see the job description that Linda sent out?
I had made another, a little, did some updates to that because I realized what I had sent you for the ad did have the hours.
18 hours a week, I read in the...
Yeah.
So you have an updated one?
I did. I must have left it downstairs, and I blocked myself out of my office, I think.
Oh, no. I'm sorry to hear that.
So, I'll show up at 9:00 AM tomorrow to get the view from...
Okay. So Linda's proposing 18 hours, 18 hours? I also, there were a few typos in this, but I did want to point out that I do think we need to strike that the assistant will be hired and supervised by the assessor, the select board hires, and so we're going to strike out that hired...
I did change that on the document.
That's how all the hires are. Will be supervised by the town assessor. Okay. So, did everybody on the board have a chance to look at this draft?
Didn't.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
So, with this position, I'd say, I think the tabby won't be helping the assessor's office. Correct?
No.
No, she won't?
That's correct.
Yes, correct. I'm just, I'm asking, so I just want to make sure it's not going to increase hours and more budget to the assessor's office because we're using tabby.
And this position is in your budget?
Yes.
For this year?
It is. My only thing I did not add was anything about compensation, but I figured that that would need to be ironed out depending on who that is their credentials, experience, whatever.
I think that's fair. If you, we definitely would want them to have, based on who the candidate was that you brought forward, or candidates.
Right.
Joe?
So, is this candidate is someone to assist you administratively, not at a higher level? Correct or incorrect? Sort of like...
Correct. Everything up to...
Right. It's more administrative than having the knowledge of an assessor.
Correct.
I'm just asking the question.
No, I know. Did you get a chance to look over?
I did look at it.
Okay. So, everything in that. So, I left it that way just because it's, it's not like they would be doing all of it, but at least there wouldn't be a limitation as far as, well, you're just going to do five, you know, that it's...
You're looking for more of an entry-level person as opposed to someone that has your experience?
Like a contractor, yes. Absolutely.
Just want to make sure I'm the same thing.
Are you done, Joe?
I am, thank you.
Dan?
Would you be taking this person on inspections with you?
Yes.
For just one? You would?
Absolutely.
I kind of have a question about, since your department has changed, since we don't have a consultant any longer. Is that something you feel confident with, that you don't have that expertise, that you're good, you don't need any additional consultants that have maybe additional guidance or whatever, maybe higher qualifications than you have? You don't, you feel you're good without any of that now?
I wouldn't say 100%. I feel confident. I also have Linda Kirsten still on the books until mid-November, so I plan on taking full advantage of that. And I use other towns, district, my district advisor, and other towns throughout the state for questions, and sometimes it's as simple as, "Hey, what do you do about this?" kind of thing. Getting closer to reappraisal, I would probably have a different answer for that.
And can you refresh us on what your timeline is for the reappraisal?
That's a whole other discussion. I would like to, we're early, 2000, I'm already into 2022, so within the next few years, I would like to see us beginning that. But that would be, I need to put that together, need to present to you, or at least to have a discussion about that, and what that looks like and what that might mean, because I know companies are booking out three to five years for reappraisals. It's not something I would take on myself.
I understand.
Yeah, absolutely. So...
So, is this a temporary position? No. So, do you envision potentially coming back for more consulting help besides hiring a firm, or, I'm just trying to understand the whole dynamic of the department, I think.
Right. Understand. So, this position, to me, would be permanent. I believe it would be at least two people to run that department. Consulting work, I really, I don't know. Like, I'm not in a position right now where I've come up against needing that. I actually have a better handle and idea of commercial property, which was a huge thing. Just went through, which you'll find out in the next segment, of subsidized housing, all of that was something I had not looked at before with some pain, got through it. But, you know, I do feel confident in moving forward without the need to hire a consultant on a more permanent basis.
Okay.
I don't know if that fully answers your question.
No, I'm just trying to understand the structure that we would pretend, because when we hire somebody, if we decide later on we really need somebody with more qualifications, that's kind of hard to make that switch without creating, you know, a potential layoff or whatever we might have to do, and I just, I'd like to try to mitigate that. So why don't we, we're on the assessor, but let's talk about, so errors and admissions, what's going on with this list? And we'll jump back, but I think that I was like, I'm trying to get a whole, a handle, is everybody okay with this? Of what's going on in your office? And I'm just trying to, so we can help make the best decision.
So I have, how many? Nine? So with, some of these are, you know, I want to say, I'm not going to pass the buck, but not my fault, but they come to me, so I have to make those corrections. So, do you want to just go through with an explanation of each one? I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I want you to understand, and the, probably the majority that's on this list that you see that say needed to be combined, so two parcels, one needs to be made inactive. So the process followed through up until the point of inactivating the abutting parcel. So it's like step by step by step, and if there's a distraction, then that gets, so a lot of times those inactive parcels get waylaid. A couple of attorney errors, a transfer that didn't get down to my office, you know, I'm not surprised with over 400 transfers last year that there's not more than this, actually. I was really expecting to have more. I did talk over with this, with my district advisor, said there's not a lot you can do about it, it is what it is. So, you know, the downside of all of this is that there is going to be, I'm trying to figure all these out, loss of revenue to the town, which is the downside on ENOs. And worked, you know, I've tried working along with Marco also on these, so that he and I are both on the same page with all of these. The two biggest, I think, is Butterfield. They kind of got mixed up in the commercial reappraisal piece, and those cannot be valued on their buildings. It's basically a straight income approach. So, we're provided with that information, and when you go to the state website at the time that these were done, the state sets the cap rate for these, so that information wasn't available until, which I thought was odd, not until recently. So those are probably, and the senior housing building, probably the largest loss.
Do you have a total figure on the change?
On the loss?
Of the whole, of the whole list here?
Oh, I didn't do a total total. I kind of went each one.
So what is the Butterfield senior?
Or that was the one. All right. I don't think this figure is right. Well, I didn't change this, and I apologize. At the time that I did this, I had a value of $11,818 as a loss, $11,000 in tax revenue. I would like to have Marco helping with that one to make sure. I think it's less because the information that I went over with Butterfield Stewart Property Management, that was based on a value of over $1 million. So, that was when we discovered that we couldn't use that figure, that it's based on income and expenses and vacancy rate. So, the, once I got around to the correct value, which I don't have written down here, but it is 873-200, which I could probably figure out, but, or I can do it and let you know after.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a real quirky thing, and you can, you can only give them expenses for so much of the utilities. It's kind of a, I don't know, I learned a lot, I'll tell you that.
Okay. We get the idea.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions, Linda? We'll jump back to the assessor job description. Does anybody have any questions, comments? So if we approve this with the update she has, or does everybody want to see a finished copy?
I'd just see finished.
Sarah wants to see it finished. So does...
With the dollars?
With, with, well, in here? There's no dollars in here.
Oh, not that, I mean...
We're talking about the job description right now. Do you want to see it finished?
If we're just going to, if the only thing we're changing is the spelling corrections and the will be higher, then I'm fine. I'm not saying it.
Is that all we're changing?
That's what I'm checking.
Is that all we're changing?
I, I...
Added the hours.
A couple capitals, letters, and I did take out that piece of the hiring. Where was that?
I do have a question.
Okay. All right. Sarah?
Basically, oh, sorry.
Okay.
No, the question I had is, it says your salary will be negotiated at the time of hire based on experience and whatever, but do you know in, within your budget, how much you can afford to pay somebody at $18 an hour?
$18?
Like, would you, well, I mean, at 18 hours a week, I apologize.
Oh.
Do you have, do you, like, can you work backwards and say, "The range will be up to this number because otherwise I go out of my budget"?
Right.
That's going to be that.
Okay. So, do you want Linda to come back with that scenario? What, or what does the board want to do? With it completed and the update and the budget and the figure? What the, if, what the pay range might be?
That would be helpful.
What'd you say, Scott?
I think that would, I think that would be helpful. Just to get a better grasp on...
Okay. Yes, Linda?
Just to understand, is that when I'm looking for someone, basically, I did the, the more in-depth is basically everything that I know, so I would want somebody to at least not know as much as I do, but hopefully that would be awesome if they did, because then it's two working side by side, which is what I hope to gain from all of this, that, you know, it used to be, "Well, you just do homestead and I'm going to do current use." No, everybody needs to know how to do everything. If I drop dead tomorrow, we're screwed, sorry. But, I mean, you know, that's my hope from this.
So it is a very competitive labor market right now, and so that's where, I would like to see what the range of pay that we can, within your budget, we can afford to pay, and staying within your budget, and then tailor the hours based on that, too, because we may find a very qualified candidate, but they may not be able to work more than 10 hours. So I think it's important to get a quality person who is going to learn and be able to stay with you for a while, but we have to, I don't, I, off the top of my head, don't know what their pay range would be for this. So I think that that would be helpful for this board. Eric?
Putting that pay range on...
Not in the ad, for the board identification.
Well, no, but I think even in the ad, to say from this to this, is going to help you not get 30 people who think it's $30 an hour and two people who think it's, you know, it just like, helps to have...
It helps weed it out and also show interest for other candidates. Good advice. So let's do that. Let's get this really cleaned up, so it's ready to go. And, Scott?
No, I was just wondering, there isn't someone that you might think, that you have in mind, or you think might be interested? Linda?
Do I have someone?
Yes, he's asking if you know...
Oh, no, not at all.
And we have to, we have to advertise this. That's, that's a requirement, so we have to go through that process, and also, we don't know who's out there, so...
Because this is the time, you know, to do this, and... Because this is the time, you know, to do this and come, you know.
Okay, so get, get your pay range in there. Get your, make sure it fits within your budget. And we'll see that again. And then we'll be able to approve it, hopefully, and get it advertised. Now we're on to the errors and, back, jumping back to the errors and omissions. So you're asking us to approve all these errors and omissions tonight?
I am, yes.
I, I know, I would appreciate dollar figures on this. I just, I, I find it hard to know what I, we're approving when we don't have individual dollar figures. I know we have to do this, but it would really be useful for the, for the board. Am I speaking for the board?
I agree.
I mean, I, I have...
Yes, Sarah?
Is that something you can get together and email to the board?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is having to wait two more weeks because that'll be past the, the tax due date. And these are only revised tax bills. But I...
Can you go down to your office and do this and come back? We all know you've blocked yourself out.
Well, my keys might, I don't know.
I can give you a key.
Or I can just do it.
Because we could get back, we could get you back into this meeting with the information.
All right, let's do that.
Okay.
Just so you know, we're not trying to make this harder for you. It's important to have it in a record.
No, I do have some, just not...
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll see you back in a bit, Linda. Thank you. Okay, we are now jumping to the police. Randy, first item is update on capital budget for computers.
Yeah, so this came in actually after budgets were done. So the state is changing from our current CAD system, which is computer guided dispatch from Spilden reporting, to Valcor. And what it is, Valcor is more or less gonna be now statewide instead of some of the being Spilden and that, and then Valcor. That being said, the MDTs, the computers that are in our cruiser, because in technology we have it where we're buying one every year. Well, because now switching over to Valcor required Windows 10, we have two of them that do not have that. And you have to have this switched over. We've already ordered the computers because they're switching over here in the middle of September. So I've had to already purchase these computers. And so two computers are going to be at $8,344, where for the budget for capital, we only have $6,300. So just, I wanted to let you know that right off the bat, we're gonna be about $2,044, some odd dollars over budget. And it's something that we had to do. That being said, next year we will not have to buy a computer. So that's 63, you know, you take out that 20 grand or 2 grand plus, so that'll show offset. But I just wanted to update you on that, especially with the numbers. That it's something that, again, the state does things they don't give you much notice of.
No, I, I understand you had to do it. And it should wash out with the capital budget since that's not a, you know, a hard year to year thing. So you're still, you should be all right. But I appreciate the FYI.
Oh, I am. I'm trying to stay in there.
Any questions, Sir Randy, about the computers?
No.
All right, next we have the, the update on sign-on bonus.
So all I did was just do this. What is green is what we need to take out of the sign-on bonus. I got this template for the sign-on bonus. I forget what agency. Then when we do the sign-on bonus this year, the officer Cunningham, and then sending it down to be paid out, I contacted Marco, we found a couple of glitches. So that being said, according to Marco, that Veevers, through Veevers, I guess, and he can speak on it, is that it has to be taken out. Where in here it says the sign-on bonus is not considered a salary and shall not be included for the purposes of retirement benefit calculations or salary increases. So that has to be, been changed, so they have to do that. I don't remember where I got this template from. I contacted Wilmington, I contacted Wittenhall. They do things a little bit differently, Wittenhall does. Wilmington, they take everything out of their sign-on bonuses, including this. So what I'm gonna recommend is just going forward now. We have that taken out. And so now not only is the state and federal taxes taken out of the sign-on bonus that the Veevers Retirement is taken out also. I pretty much got that in my head.
I get why that is necessary. I don't know why we can't calculate salary based on the hourly, though. I mean, that, to me, that, that can be removed. But still, we, we base, increases based on hourly, not on what they made last year because that includes overtime and everything else, so.
And the thing is, is back in, to actually keep a copy of it, Select Ward Meeting Tuesday, February 9, 2019, we did this. And this was after our attorney looked at this, engaged his approval that everything was, you know, fine, so. So anyway, just going in front of you guys to have this because this was a board decision to have that, so now...
We'll make a motion to remove that.
And make a motion that we remove the line, "The sign-on bonus is not considered salary and shall not be included for purposes of retirement benefit calculations or salary increases from the sign-on bonus agreement for the, for the police department."
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
No.
All right. All right, is that it for the police department?
That is for now.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Okay, we're moving now to the unfinished business. Are you there, Scott? We're at the library sign.
Is it the library?
Yep, so I believe you guys, sorry. Yeah, I believe you guys have that those kids, that, that came in. Hold on. You are able to hold...
Does Rick have an opinion on the library sign?
I'm sure children of the country...
I'm sorry, hold on. I have both my...
Okay. All right, well, the library sign, which right now is... Okay, so I have, I have a copy of it right here for everybody. So, so it's adding the Kids in the Country, new posts that we'll have to provide, and the top that says Dover Common.
You got it, yes. The Dover Common one looks really nice. And I think I mentioned this before, that Travis said that they could, you know, if we can't get the sign on there, that those posts would be reused somewhere else. And yeah, that, the addition on top looks nice. I don't know about if we want to go forward with those or whatever, I think.
Um, has Kids in the Country seen this? Is that a no?
That was a no.
No. Okay, I, I would not want to propose something with their name on it without them seeing it. Yes, Dan?
I have a question.
I don't know, is that a ballpark, I don't know?
Yes, these are movable.
Oh, so I was gonna say that was movable.
See, this is a movable piece in here where you can put in different hours or whatever. It depends on whatever, seasonal or COVID or whatever, you can change it. So this part is movable, so, but...
It's two-sided, but is this sign at the library two-sided?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes. So is this quote based on a two-sided sign?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's the people who did the original part.
Yeah. Everyone is like, I'm like, I'm...
So other comments from the board?
I agree, just to make sure that Kids in the Country doesn't have any questions or concerns.
Questions from the public? So I think we can approve this tentative that to having Kids in the Country also agree to this and having their sign, their name on it. I, I think everybody here likes the top that says Dover Common.
So it's just gonna be two, two signs being put on, what's already there?
And new posts, bit longer, taller posts. And has this been run by Tabby?
No.
Okay, so we have a little bit of work to do.
Kids in the Country to us means something, but someone driving by wouldn't know that it's taken.
I know. And there's no sign there whatsoever now.
Oh, the, the sign on the building's gone?
Yes, there's no sign on the building. Okay, so...
I've never seen a sign.
There was a sign. Okay, so I think we need to show it to Kids in the Country. And also Tabby's got to get the okay. And there needs to be a sign permit, which we can probably waive the fee since it's the town. And finally get a permit started for this particular sign. But first we need to talk to Kids in the Country. Can you do that, Scott?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. And then after Kids in the Country agrees, we can send it to Tabby. The cost of this sign without the new post is $745, which reuses this middle part and adds this and this.
Is it two-sided?
Yes, it's two-sided.
It says two-sided on the bill. Okay?
Okay. So since we don't have a sign permit, we probably shouldn't approve the sign until we get Kids in the Country and the permit approved.
There's too many...
Too many variables.
Do you want me to get the other post up still?
Say that again?
Want me to write quotes for the post?
Quotes for the post.
Do we need quotes for these posts? Travis is shaking, no. We'll figure that part out. We need to get the other two pieces. Kids in the Country's okay. And, and a sign permit started because Tabby's gonna need dimensions.
Oh, that construction stuff.
Okay? So doing that, maybe we can get this approved at the next meeting. Thank you, Scott, for your efforts with that. And then we have possible quotes for a town hall ramp project.
I have no numbers yet.
Somebody's gonna want to do it in the middle of the winter.
Same as last time, I have met with a contractor, have no numbers yet, but, and I haven't heard back from anybody else either, so. It's, Janet and I have been just phone calls and emails, but the response has been not so great.
You need to smile at them and ask them for a quote. I understand everybody's really, really busy, but just try to stay at it. And if you get one, please put it back on the agenda. We'd really appreciate it. If you get two, that's even better. But thank you. I know that this is hard to do right now because everybody is much bigger, you know, fish to fry right now. But thank you. Travis, anything else from the highway department?
Uh, yeah, I got an update. We got our new grader. Thank you very much. It's working great. It looks good, goes good. Thank you.
The townspeople?
Yes.
The taxpayers paid for it, so hopefully it will show in our roads, right?
We have it in our possession now.
Excellent, that wasn't a bad lead time. Economic develop, oh, wait, and we're, and we did that. Wait, we have to go back to new business on the second part of it. Request to use money from the restoration and digitization funds up to $54,000.
All right, folks. So digitization of land records. This is something I've been thinking about since I was elected clerk. Couple things have changed to make this the time I'm coming forward to you. One being, when I was elected clerk, the recording fees were $10 per page recorded. $1 of that 10 went into a restoration of records fund. The restoration of records fund was authorized in state statute as an option for towns if they wanted to create that fund and use that $1 per page. Otherwise, it was just another recording fee and income, either to the town or the clerk, in Nova's case, the town. That $1 per page didn't cover the cost of digitization. And I couldn't see asking the property taxpayers to pay for it. But it's the way of the future, and I, I did a lot of research on it, visited different town clerks who have different vendors digitizing their land records and just kept abreast of the situation. Well, a couple of years ago, if you remember, you created a restoration and digitization fund. The legislature decided this wasn't going to be an optional fund that clerks had to create this. I had to create a restoration and digitization fund separate from the old one. We opened a new bank account. They increased the recording fees to $15 per page, four of which goes into the restoration and digitization. So there's a much bigger chunk of change going in there every month. More than enough to pay for this. And the second thing that happened is COVID. With a program like this, attorneys, real estate professionals, surveyors, the general public can access the land records from home. They can access the index, and they can access the images of the land records. They can print the images of the land records. The vendor collects the $1 per page fee and remits that to the town electronically. We don't lose out on our copy fees. But it's super convenient for a lot of people who use our land records, which should trickle down in theory to our homeowners who are buying and selling property, getting mortgages, et cetera. Business owners, liens, everything should be easier. Basically, COT systems is the system that Wilmington uses. Whitingham has it. Wilmington uses a server-based product. Whitingham has the new cloud-based product. 52 other clerks in Vermont use COT, plus all of the state of Connecticut, I think, and a bunch of northeast states use COT. They're fantastic. They're the best in the business, in my opinion. And the research I've done to make that determination has to do with clerks' experience with the recording process they provide, the equipment, and the other end. I've talked to a lot of attorneys, a lot of real estate people who go town to town in Vermont and use these systems. And the interface with COT, the, the search function is just more user-friendly. The fee structure, and you buy a subscription if you're a professional, and you get access to all these towns they service. And you can look up land records and... Now, in order to hire COT to do this, right, you're looking at 20 grand. They give you a scanner, a workstation. I'll be talking to them about the particulars of that. I'll involve Tabby and, and the folks from New Hampshire in that. It might be that some of our stuff is good enough as is. I planned on upgrading the, the public computers downstairs that attorneys use anyway, they're Windows 7. But we probably won't need maybe two stations down there. So basically, you're looking at 20 grand, okay, to go today forward, all right? A title search is 40 years, so back in time. Okay, so we've had NIMRIC for, since '89. So I have a digital index going back to 1989. COT can take the information from NIMRIC, import it into their system back to '89, okay? Then they will take our land record books and scan them, okay, back to '89, every document, and link it to that index so that our professionals can go back at least to '89. It's not a 40-year search. To go back prior to '89, you're looking at a card file. It can be done, it's more money and more time, and we can talk about it if you want to. But the easy way, the most bang for the buck, is to go back in time with NIMRIC to '89 and, and link those documents. That's the additional 30 grand roughly. Basically, this is sitting in the restoration and digitization account right now. The monthly fee for this service is 170 bucks. That is because... The monthly fee for this service is $170. That is because a bunch of clerks in southern Vermont are pooling, and COT is giving us a reduced price. Maybe you're looking at $300 without this. This is a five-year contract for the $170, saving you some money. But basically, a lot of clerks in Vermont are thinking about this now because of the ARPA funds. A lot of clerks are using ARPA funds for this. A lot of clerks spend their restoration money as it comes in. We haven't done that in Dover. I followed suit with Mary Lou's philosophy of saving that for big expenses like this. I look at what you folks and Eric and Shannon have planned for ARPA funds, and I think, I'm not gonna ask for that. I have this money sitting in an account. It's not gonna cost the property taxpayer anything. I would like you to authorize us to move forward with COT. I have a couple of other companies, CIS and ACS. ACS is down in Brownborough. I've taken field trips to Brownborough and Wilmington when they had CIS. That didn't work out. They didn't like CIS and went with COT. I've been down to Wilmington and checked out their COT system. Jeanette and I will go down to, if you're on board, to Whitingham, to CL Myra, and look at the process down there, because they have a cloud-based COT model. Basically, uh, basically, what else do I have for you? Let's see, uh... Should we want to, we can add other things, select board minutes. If we had a program, microfiche, something or other on our computers, it could, minutes could be stored on the same portal and search, you could do word searches. Jeez, I think the select board approved this, you know, like five years ago, word search, boom, there it is. That's like... There's other opportunities for records to be stored on this thing, should we ever want to. Have you any questions?
Can we add the pre-'89 at a later date?
We can. Yes.
Mentioned the professionals versus the general public.
Yes.
Professionals have a password? Did I go to you to get this approved?
It's all through COT. So they buy a subscription from COT, and I don't know if it's a password, or it's linked to their specific computer, how that works. Honestly, I don't. People can buy a subscription for a day. I think it's $4. You know, Jim, if he doesn't wanna come down and visit with me in the vault, then he can... He can stay at home, save his gas money, but he's gotta pay $4 to do that.
Jim, can I try?
So, basically, the group price pricing for the clerks in southern Vermont to get this group pricing, we have to have this thing signed late October. I brought it to you folks today. I wasn't, I was on vacation last week. I'm not as prepared as I normally might be, but I wanted to get it on your plates in case you have questions. Wanted to hold off. We could still have time for another meeting if you request more information from me to get this thing signed, to get in on the group pricing that COT's put together, because everybody's doing ARPA funds right now.
Jim, again?
What I meant was, how long will it take you to go back to '89 to get all that stuff digitized?
Yeah, this fall. What they'll do is typically, it would be more expensive. They would come to your office, to one clerk's office, who goes with this process, and bring in their scanner. You have to shut down. They scan everything for a week. Basically, they'll set up a central location, and they'll scan all 10 towns' land records at one shot, and they're looking at this fall.
Eric?
As far as agendas go, the new website actually stores, and the global search on the website searches documents as well, so I don't think we need to do that with this piece, because that will all be managed on the website.
So we can say whatever dog bites and we could...
And it'll pull up any agenda that has dog bite on it through the website. The global search, because your site will be hosted through Amazon, is a lot more expansive than we currently have.
Okay. Sarah?
How much money is in the R and D?
We're $25 short of $54,000. But now, so, yeah, and a lot of that has to do with COVID. But basically, we've got over $100,000 in the restoration account, which we kept separate, if you remember. That's not being touched. This is all the new money since the legislation came down for the restoration and digitization fund. You know, to keep up with a $300 a month, it's gonna be $170 for five years, but let's say it was $300. $300 a month fee, moving forward, you're looking at recording 75 pages. You know, we'll do that in a day. You know, so the money is, the money's there with this, with the way, the state wants us to do this. The lawyer's lobby is strong, right, and lawyers love us, okay? So they're pushing us to do this in a way, and incentivizing us. Guys like me who said, "I'm not putting this on the taxpayer," they said, "Okay, there's your money. What's your excuse now?" So I really don't have an excuse. And basically, COVID, I mean, you know, there were a bunch of town clerks got sued in Vermont, because their records were not available to the public on a regular basis. You know, a lot of town clerks are older, they're scared, whatever. You know, as you know, I didn't close through the whole thing. I wasn't ever in danger of that, but who knows? COVID scared the heck out of me, you know, as far as my clerk's office is concerned. Not necessarily personally, but moving forward, I feel I need to do this to provide the service, which ultimately is for the taxpayer and the resident of Dover. This needs to happen just in case. It's the way of the future. Eventually, the state's gonna mandate it. And I've been thinking about it since 2007. I've done a lot of research, and I'm ready, and I hope and you're ready.
Any other comments? Anybody? Richard?
Just a quick question. So who owns the images?
We do.
So, but will you be able to give them to somebody else, or is this something that, you know, in five years, they say it's maybe $5,000 a month?
We say no. All the images are still ours, not theirs. They have no ownership over the images whatsoever.
So we could migrate to another platform?
Yes, Wilmington did.
Thought, I'm just concerned that some ask, you know, if they take images that they own.
That's a fantastic question. Fantastic question, one of my big concerns. Yep.
Sarah?
I was just saying, am I correct, but in the contract that they sent you, it specifically, it explicitly says that they have no, they hold no ownership? That all the images are held by the town?
I can't point to that.
I thought I read that.
I did too.
My point was just that it was explicitly stated that they, that the ownership of the images was the town's.
And they also offer service.
And I will say, as clerks, we talk. You know, we have a list to serve, and, you know, we talk. And by far, the company that clerks are happiest with, from a clerk-town standpoint, is COT.
Sarah found it on page two.
Did you?
Under five ownerships. It says that COT and the customer knowledge, the customer owns all rights and privileges to the images made available through the service. COT will not remarket or claim ownership of the images. I'm pretty excited about this, actually.
Just to say, you know, there's the extra pot money that started way back when. And to go back to 40 years, what would it take to do that? Because I think that would be kind of like the big thing, and if it's a better price, how to get it done. I would wish that you guys would consider doing the full 40 years, and even more if you could, because I think it's kinda cool to get the gold in the bill of land records, you know, when they were handwritten in the book, and it'd be nice to see more of them in there.
So, no, we could go, but we could do that, and we could go back, the cards go back to '69. After that, it's a general index. It's handwritten. They can't digitize that. Well, I suppose there's a way to do it, but they wouldn't do that.
Just a ledger?
Yes, okay, but to go from '89 back to '69, the cards file is relatively easy. They have a computer program that does, they lay out the cards in alphabetical order and take, it's like a... Anyways, they can do that. I'd like to see how this goes, and first, before we consider that, see what the attorney feedback is. You know, because a title search is 40 years technically, but, you know, if your source deed is 50 years ago, you're done, you know? So I'd like to see what the cost benefit is on that before we move ahead, but I, yeah, that's a good idea.
Any other questions? Anywhere? So Andy's, oh, what? What, Scott?
I appreciate how thorough and thoughtful Andy has been with all of this, and clearly done his due diligence and all that, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
So Andy, you're the lead on this, and I, you need to sign this document, but we will authorize you to spend, make a motion to authorize you to spend the 54, if that's what you want. I mean, it's...
Yes, that's what I want, what I would ask of you, and on the, if clipped to the back of that is an authorization form. Do you see that? Did I?
And have all of us sign that?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
We've always done that. It just keeps everything nice and clean for posterity. Whenever I spend that restoration and digitization, I'm a signer on that account, but I think Marco's probably a signer too. But I like to have that in writing.
All right, I make a motion that we authorize payment to COT systems of an amount not to exceed $54,000 for digitizing our land record payment coming from the restoration and digitization fund.
A question?
Oh, hold on. Let's get the second by Joe, and now Dan, you can ask your question.
Does it have the date of when they're digitizing stuff?
The date of what?
When it's gonna happen.
I don't think it does have the date of when it's gonna happen. We have to have the contract signed by, you know, I wanna say August 31st.
No, what I'm referring to is the period of time that they're digitizing stuff to...
It kinda depends upon when all the town clerks in the group pricing group, you know...
So this is just $170. It's not the actual $50,000 to digitize it?
No, no. We're authorizing them to do the work to get it digitized. The $170 is the annual, is the monthly fee for access.
But does it say in the contract, documents from 1989 to now?
Yes, it does.
Okay, yeah. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you for all your efforts.
So after that, they just keep constantly doing it?
Yes, moving forward.
Put it in that $170.
Yes, exactly. So in 10 years, we'll have it at 40.
All right, before we go to economic development, shall we jump back to finish, Linda?
So I'm gonna give you this. Do you think that looks? I did loss and red. So there is a, each individual one, and then a total.
So the green is a gain?
Yes. With the first one being the former owner got the tax bill, so it's not really a gain, but it's still, there's no value difference, but I was told it had to go through as an EDA.
All right, so give us a moment. We only have one copy of it.
I have two.
Okay. Start with Joe over there.
I would like one, do you want me to? Or actually, I have it, so I don't need it.
Good night, Andy.
I'll be back for the control. Yeah.
I know.
But this is what we need to put in. This is what we need for the records, but you just did for us. Thank you.
Both, I guess. Well...
Well, we're, if we decide on something, if someone asks us, now we have what actually happened. So if someone asks us a question three months down the line, it's easier for us to access, that's all.
Yes, Linda?
So somewhere, if you do authorize those to go through, I did make a little line at the bottom for you to sign, because that will, once those changes are in and tax bills have been sent, it's changed to the grant list, so a copy of that will go in the grant list book in the vault.
Well, we'd just like to have it in the minutes, in case there's any questions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, and these, did you double-check these numbers, Linda?
I did.
Okay. The total loss of revenue on these nine, you know, is $12,129. There is a tax gain of $3,893.64, making the total loss to the town, the net, is 8206.65. Sarah's checking math. Not the...
Just to be, to be sure, I'm just composed of all right. Yep, I get the same number.
Okay. So, Sarah, just verify the numbers. Okay.
Deciphered.
Any discussion on the errors and omissions?
So, sorry, I just had a question.
Okay, ask a question, Joe.
So, what it shows a loss to the town?
Yes.
I'm just being straightforward and asking. From our making that mistake, did the town lose that, or did we just lose that money because within redoing what needed to be done, it became a loss to the town?
No, it'd be a loss to the town, because...
But I'm not saying, when you say a loss, when we say you see a loss to the town, is it because there was an error, that that error created losing those taxes? It wasn't that you, I'm asking straight out, it wasn't something you did in error that the town's now gonna lose money because of your error. It's just the error of within, you know, because you're combining properties and this and that, so it's not something that...
Yeah, well, I did make an error on several of those. Several I didn't, so...
But there are errors that you made, but if you hadn't made that error, we would just had the grant list correct. Not like, correct, right, Marco? You know what I'm asking. Yes, thank you, Mark.
For example, Balutsky, if you look at that one. I believe Balutsky received the total tax bill that was correct. And then Boeing got a separate tax bill. So really, we doubled the bill. So you're really, so you're really going back to where you should have been. So that, for that example.
I'm not putting you on the spot. I just wanna make sure that we're losing money because of our mistakes. It's just the mistakes of the actual...
Yeah, but there was money that we weren't entitled to.
To, exactly.
Dan?
Is this also a matter of misinforming you or not informing you of what's going on?
There were a couple of attorney clerks. There was a couple of town clerk clerks. Were human.
So in the future, Linda, we would like it with this kind of information, that would be, with numbers attached to it, because it's just really hard to approve something that doesn't have any kind of structure or number, or... So would somebody like to make a motion to approve these nine errors and omissions? make a motion to approve these nine errors and omissions?
I move that we approve the nine errors and omissions as detailed and for a total loss to the town of $8,206.65.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think Scott is no longer with us. Okay.
He's multitasking.
Okay, we are done with the assessor now, and now we're going to jump down to economic Shannon, are you up first? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
He's dedicated. It's on the moon, it was the way transmission.
Um, yes, two signage program applicants. Um, Invasion is redoing their sign. They are looking for a grant for $695.50. Um, Timber Creek is redoing their whole sign, um, and they are looking for a max grant of 2,000. Both included their, um, signage permits, their scale drawings, and their before photos.
Any questions about the two sign permit applicants? Would somebody like to make a motion about the, to approve these?
I make a motion, will you approve of the signage program of Invasion and Timber Creek? And I have the numbers in front of me. For.
Reimbursement.
$2,000 reimbursement for Timber Creek and $695 for Invasion.
Sorry.
All right. Sarah?
Is in, why do I have this weird memory of Invasion actually becoming not, of them not being Invasion Board Shop anymore, of that becoming like a warehouse, you know?
No, but so the front section is Invasion.
Okay.
And then the back section has been used for storage, not currently paid.
It's for, it is for sale.
Yeah.
It is for sale, so we, we could be making a sign, but that's, that's neither, you know, that's not.
No, I was, I was just, I was remembering.
Yeah.
That's all.
And we allow renters to be part of this program, so that's part of, all right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
All right. Trails and Rec Committee appointment change.
Okay, so when we put the Trails and Rec Committee together, we make recommendations to you guys on who should sit on that committee. You guys approved those and appointed them to that committee. At this point, Southern Vermont Trails Association, their chair is filled with Steve Petrick, who will be stepping down and being replaced by Connie Oakley. We just need you guys to approve that change. On our recommendation.
Sarah?
I make a motion that we.
I had it, okay.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the appointment of Tom Oakley to replace Steve Petrick on the Trails and Rec Committee.
Does he live in Dover?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just, I'd just like to ask those questions because I want to make sure we have a predominantly Dover base on our Trails and Rec. Anything else? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, way to go, Scott. Okay, let's have a general economic development department update.
Uh, very successful event hosted. Our department last week for the Dover Launch Business Plan Competition with a brainstorming session. We have, uh, 26 people there, plus Shannon and myself. Very stimulating conversation. The media exposure to this program is growing. We got WCAX down here, we're running the commons this week, and it's spreading out. There's a ton of interest. Um, the Dover Town website, after a two and a half hour training session with myself, Shannon, and, uh, Jeanette, we are scheduled to launch that new site on September 17th.
Woo-hoo!
Okay. Trails and Recreation Grants have been submitted, uh, on behalf of the town Dover in partnership with Southern Vermont Trails Association. We applied for the GORAC grant for Horace Hill, uh, for a total of around $300,000, which would get us the hiking trails, disc golf course, and mountain bike trails that were all covered in the Western Sampson Plan. If we get invited for the full grant, then there will be more information forthcoming on that. But the letter of interest has been submitted. We hear back at the end of the month. Same with the Ursa Grant for $30,000. That money will be going towards the town forest to expand the current parking lot, place pavilions, and to pay for the, the new signage and, um, stuff for Phil Bartlett up there. So as soon as we have information on that, we will get it back to you. Last point, we were contacted, uh, to, we were notified that the additional ARCA money that was supposed to be sent out to counties has now been split up for the state of Vermont. In most other states, they have more municipal county than what the structure is in Vermont. So they split that additional money up. Our initial allocation was $110,864.33. We've already received the first half of that. Our secondary county allocation will be an additional $205,712.96, for a total of We should get the first half of the county payment any day now, and then those gold second payments will come next year. There are still no definitive answers on how that money can be spent.
So we are putting that money in a dedicated area so that it's not, you know, it's separate and we keep track of it?
We received a hundred and something thousand the other day, 54. No, but then we got on top of that.
Oh. So we got the first county payment.
We have about 150, 160 now.
Okay.
It's in a separate account.
Very good. Good. And then once we know how we can spend it, we'll look at things. Is that it for the Economic Development Department? Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'd like a motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have special event permits and, and also an outside consumption permit. We don't sign these. The town clerk signs these. Um, first one is the special event permit for White Mountain Distillery, DBA Stowed Cider, cider, wine, and harp, for the Wine and Harvest Festival, September 25th from 9 to 6. Any comments? Andy?
Um, so there's actually two permits there. Um, there was some confusion as to what kind of a permit they would need. The state, uh, recently, in the past year, instituted, instituted a new kind of liquor permit called a festival permit. We were squeezing, shoehorning, uh, you know, things like the Wine and Harvest Festival into a special event permit. The state said, "Now we should have a festival permit." Now they do. Upshot, it's a brand new thing. Some, one permit allows them to do part of it, the other allows them to do the other. The, the legislation isn't perfect. Bottom line is, if you would like to approve this, if you'd like me to sign off, I'd like to sign both permits, send them up to the state, and then everybody's covered for everything they want to do.
Yes, and that one has to, the other ones do not.
That's correct. Yeah, they're not festivals for whatever reason, I don't know.
Okay. All right, so let's take each one of these individually.
Just on top of that, because with that, I saw the same thing that Jeanette did this morning. I talked to, I can't remember his name now, from DLC, because he had reached out as well. And with that being said, they are, um, the guy I took to, DLC is sending down Tom Kern, the sergeant from DLC in this district, to talk to the interested parties in this, to go forward and get it taken care of. So even though it would say special permit, when you guys sign that down here, when it gets to DLC, you may see it come back under festival and not the special permit. So with things going forward.
Sarah?
So are you saying that if one of them applies for the festival, then the, anybody else at the Wine and Harvest Festival just needs a special event? Or is it?
So, no, right? Um, it's, it's, it's confusing, and I think there was confusion on behalf of the state with the new legislation and with the vendors. And, um, and I'm not sure of all the details, but, um, at least one of the vendors, uh, I was reading this email chain and they're going back and forth, and one of the vendors said, "Yes, you would apply for a festival permit. That doesn't allow us to do the things we've done historically in the past." It, it solves the problem of approving a special event blanket permit with all these subpermities under that one permit, so that they don't all have to apply for their own special, special event permit, which is what we've done in the past. But there's always been confusion. Always the vendors want to apply for their own special event permit. And always, it's been, um, a, a chore to get everybody on the same page. Is it just the chamber who's applying for the permit and naming all of the subpermities? Or is it, it's been a mess, which is one of the reasons for the festival permit. But since the legislation creating the festival permit, or the rule is not perfect, um, because it's the first year, they didn't include everything that they want to do at the Wine and Harvest Festival. So the, so the people applying are saying to the state, "No, we're going to apply for both, because we want to be able to do everything." And the state's saying, "Yeah, okay, apply for both and we'll figure it out later. As long as the town signs off on both, we'll all figure it out."
Yeah, and there is an application here for the Southern Vermont Chamber of Commerce to, for the application for a festival permit.
Yes.
Okay. So we have some special event permits, the festival permit, and outside consumption permit, uh, for, for Mount Snow. We have, yes, Eric.
In talking with Charlie, literally the only thing that caused all of this confusion is that the festival permit covers all of the tastings that would happen at Wine and Harvest. The special event permit then allows those vendors to sell a full bottle of wine to a person who wants to take it home for the festival.
Oh, okay. So then you can not only taste it, but you can buy it, which you used to be able to do anyway, but.
Right, but because of this law change, you've made it so that you can have a festival, you can do all the tastings you want under this festival permit, but then you can't sell those full bottles, and that's literally half the reason most of those vendors went out here.
Okay. Okay. So, Randy, do you have any trouble with this event?
No, and just like Andy said, the guy I talked to this morning said they were straightening it out there. This is something that might affect July of last year, so as long as the board signs on it, they'll take care of it up there at their end.
Do we need to move that?
No, I don't think so now. I think we just, we're going to move the whole slate and allow the town clerk to sign these and get them out of here.
Okay. So I move that we authorize the town clerk to sign the special event permits for White Mountain Distillery, DBA Stowed Cider, for North Branch Vineyards LLC, W&amp;H, and for Cold Spring Spirits, DBA Mad River Distillers, W&amp;H, for the Wine and Harvest Festival on September 25th from 9 to 6, and the outside consumption permit for Bale/Mount Snow, Oktoberfest, October 9th, 10 to 6.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we come out of Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that was good.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, we have the consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2021. Um, we had a full board, so.
A motion to approve the minutes of August 17th.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott?
And where's the, there's a, the TBD for September 4th?
Uh, I don't have it.
Okay. So we have the, uh, the warrant, that was unanimous. Approve the warrants for Octo, August 21st for $310,482.72, and September 4th for?
I move that we approve the warrants of August 21st for $310,482.72, and September 4th for $98,336.27.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we had a thank you from HCRS. I am ready to thank the Dover residents for their vote at town meeting, for approving financial support in the amount of $1,400 for health and rehabilitative services, Access Navigator Program. We sincerely appreciate the support of the citizens of the town of Dover. These funds will help to ensure services for all citizens who need them.